Good evening and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this June 25th, 2024. In lieu of an invocation today, we'll have a moment of silence. That will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Deputy Martell. For those of you who are willing, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for our pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order. We have one presentation this evening, and that will be brought by Commissioner Sheffield. For those of you who are part of this presentation today, please join the Commissioner up front. Isaiah Hubert? There he is, I see him. Where's your mom? Does she want to come up? Oh, okay. She'll come up for photos? Or would you like to come up now? Yeah, sure, come on. You're no stranger to this place.
Oh, I'm not.
And you were also at the state of the county recently, right? Yeah, you were there.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, today is a very special day. We have some very exciting news to share with everyone, but I'll read the certificate of achievement. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on becoming one of just 750 scholars selected from more than 53,000 nationwide applicants for the Gates Scholarship. Yes, yes. This prestigious award supports exceptional minority students by covering the full cost of college attendance not met by other financial aid. As the Youth of the Year winner at the Boys and Girls Club, you delivered speeches to large audiences, exceeding fundraising goals with over 700 people in attendance. Through your excellence, leadership, and hard work, you have truly earned this honor. We look forward to witnessing your future achievements in the community and the world. Congratulations to you. I know you want to say a few words because you always do.
I'm going to say a few words.
You love doing it.
Life is good. I, yeah, right? And actually, with this scholarship, we are going to be heading to Phoenix to meet everybody, and that's on Thursday, and we're going to be there for a few days at a resort, and that's going to be amazing. I'm looking forward to that. And I am so grateful because this opens up opportunities to meet more people and to progress more in life. And I'm just grateful to everybody who's been able to pour into me and just be there on my journey, and I can't wait to give back and do more and see where this life goes. So, thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Uniquely, we have one presentation today, and we are now at our first public comment, and I'll turn things over to you for our county attorney Debbie Blair to walk us through.
Thank you. I would like to make some comments. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When speaking, please state your name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And a timer is on the podium for you to track your three minutes. Our first speaker is Leroy Emkin.
Leroy Emkin, living East Cobb, 23 years. I'm speaking to object to the public comment rules. Two in particular: All comments should be addressed through the chair. And the other is, and this is what's printed in the rules, the comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. I understand the slanderous aspect, but not the other three. To support that objection, consider the New York Times versus Sullivan United States Supreme Court case, which you should all be aware of. The first, the subject was the First Amendment principles during periods of public comment. Perhaps the most fundamental of all First Amendment free speech principles is that individuals have a free speech right to criticize the government. In New York Times versus Sullivan, U.S. Supreme Court Justice William Brennan famously wrote of a, quote, "profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials," unquote. I'm talking to all of the, to the commissioners, not just to the chair. That's my constitutional right. Second, the Mama Bear's lawsuit filed in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia. A parental rights group filed a case that, on the basis of the public comment rules, in their, in their, in their hearing, the court judge, Judge Richard Story, ordered the following in his ruling. Keep this in mind: This is our constitutional right that the police are very much aware of, and you all should be aware of this. Judge Richard Story ordered the following: "The court permanently enjoins Forsyth County District, its officers, school board members, agents, servants, employees, and all persons in active concert or participation with them who receive actual notice of this injunction from enforcing the respectfulness requirement, the restriction on personally addressing board members." I can address every one of you by name: Monica, Joanne, Lisa, Jerika, and Kelly. And I will be doing that. I have a constitutional right to do that, including the superintendent, or any restriction, or any restriction they're enjoined on any restriction of profane, uncivil--
Excuse me, sir, your time has run.
--contained in the current public policy.
Thank you, your time has run.
So I could be abusive, I have a constitutional right to do that, and you cannot prevent me from being abusive in my language, or anybody else, any of the other speakers.
The second speaker is Kathy Slow.
Good evening, Cobb County Board of Commissioners. I live in Marietta in Cobb County. I have been here before. My name is not Kathy Slow, it's Kathy Slough, like when I plow my vegetables and I'm still the vegetarian. I retired from the legal field, and Dr. Emkin is absolutely legally correct. I live in Marietta, so I pay city taxes. I live in Cobb County, so I pay Cobb taxes. Just want to share with you two things: Our county manager makes $350,000 a year. Our fantastic Cobb County Police, their salary starts at $50,000 a year. My Social Security is not $350,000 a year. Just want to kind of do a little poem here, "We the People." In Cobb County, where taxes grow, a vote is set, as we all know, a scheme to raise the tax rate. Elected folks with, I believe, plans they hide blame house values and tax assessors' wide. They say it's not their vote that hikes, but cunning plans and quiet spikes. They call these hearings budget talks, in my opinion, a crafty way to hide their rocks, but truth be told, it's tax they seek. 16, 23rd of July and the 9th, unless we act, the taxes will fly. With our current chairperson and the nodding crew, it's sad but true. In August, rains will bear a cost on property, more money lost. But if we fight with all our might, we just might keep our wallets tight. So heed this, take it true, that somebody must be me and, and everyone here, for if we leave it to none, will face the tax hikes. My mom told me to be part of the solution. I hope I am sharing my concerns that you all here to be part of the solution. I care about our county, but you're out taxing us. For over four budget cycles, 35%. You all work for us. We elected you. We can unelect you. We the people have succeeded by trying. We're not going away. You're going to see me in July in whatever it takes, and I think most of these people will be here. I thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Christine Rosman. I brought my visual tools again because apparently we're still not allowed by Ross Cavett, who isn't even a commissioner, to dictate what the, what the citizens get to do and don't do. So I think that probably should be one of your decisions that you all make instead of a non-elected official. I wanted to talk about a couple of things, mostly being about the double and triple taxation that we are getting, and I live in the city of Marietta, and so we pay for, we have an outstanding police and fire department, so does Cobb County, but that doesn't mean that we have to pay for both of them if we don't have them. So, like, when I go to eat at Wendy's, I don't go and pay for my lunch at Wendy's and pay for lunch over a Chick-fil-A at the same time. It's either one or the other. That needs to be corrected. The triple tax part would be, that would be the rain tax, the millage budget, and home tax, taxes, and the transit tax. And we are getting taxed and taxed. We don't want the rain tax. We don't want the transportation-- We don't want the transportation tax. We keep getting taxed. All these nice people that live in Cobb County can't afford to live here for very much longer because they're getting taxed out of where they live. One of my neighbors was going to come tonight. And she, she, I talked to her about it. And she said, I know. They have four kids. She and her husband have good jobs. But her mother, her aunt, they're getting taxed out of Cobb County too. And she's over it. So what we also wanted to say is, stop playing Robin Hood with our tax money because we have to know where our taxes are going. So I think there was a pretty nice soiree the other night. And that was pretty expensive. And that, I believe, was paid with taxpayer dollars. So you don't get to do that. So we also have another issue coming up in Cobb County. And that's that Unified Development Code, also known as undermining and destroying Cobb. And we're really not looking for, I mean, we're seeing these horrible houses. And they're going, and they're just in the queue waiting to turn them into apartment buildings. And what do you do with that? That starts creating chaos. And that's what I think is happening in other counties within Atlanta. And just wanted to remind you that citizens' rights matter. Thank you.
The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
Good evening. I'll start with the good news and I'll end with the bad. The good news is I've been taking advantage of the Cobb Senior Center in the exercise room. Been very nice, heavy flow of seniors. Could be a little bit larger and a little bit more equipment. But I thank Cobb County for it. Okay? The bad news. You guys voted 3-2 to put this emsplas on the ballot. So I want to commission the three of you to do something for the citizens, the citizens of Cobb. Because what I want you to be is be the change that you want to see. So Sheffield, I want you to park that Mercedes. Lisa and Jerika, whatever you drive, I want you to park it from now until November. And I want you to get on public transportation and ride it from your home to 100 Cherokee every day until November, when that emsplas is voted on. If you do that, then I think you can convince the citizens of Cobb that it's a good idea. But I don't think you're going to do it. And secondly, you know, this, this property taxes that you guys keep raising, I don't know if you realize what you're doing. You know, you guys have been, three and a half years, you played the race card. You said white people have come in here and they've been racist. And no other board have ever been talked to the way you guys have talked to, forgetting about Tim Lee and Mike Boyce, and how they were talked to with the Braves Stadium and the raisin of the millage. But see, here's the deal. Because I'm going to play the race card with you guys tonight. From one black person to another, these white folks are not going to lose their homes. Who are going to lose their homes are the people that are voting for you guys, which is the senior citizen. Sheffield, you can sit up there and laugh all you want to, but it is the truth. You've made a mockery of South Cobb. You have. And you, you escaped the grid this time. But you got another one coming. And we're going to see how well you escape that.
I'll be ready for it, Ms. Wilson.
Excuse me?
Said I will be ready for it.
Okay, I hope you are. I hope you are. But I want you guys to go and look at your voters. Look at your voter database and see who's voting for you. The vast majority of your voters are seniors. And those are the ones that you're taxing out of their homes. You can roll eyes, you can talk back, you can do whatever you want to. But the truth is the truth. And it's time for this to stop. If you get elected and you go back into office, Cobb County can see right now what you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson, your time has run.
I, I need to take a quick minute recess to confer with my county attorney. Take a quick minute recess.
Okay, welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this June 25th, 2024. We are in the midst of our first public comment. And Debbie, if you can help cue up our next speaker, please.
Yes, our next speaker is Tracy Stevenson.
Member of Cobb County for over 30 years. First of all, I got to say, wow, we had to stop the meeting because of that? I mean, wow. But anyway, at the end of the day, I'm up here kind of, I want to talk about taxes again. I know you all are probably tired of hearing it. I wish they didn't have to keep bringing it up. But today, we're going, you know, I watched your work session. And now we're going to have a $1.277 billion budget up from 1.2 billion. It just won't end, will it? The people of this city and county, all the county, all the cities here in the county are just running out of money. Remember in college, we'd call that we ran out of beer. And right now, that's where people are. They're running out of money. I hear it from a lot of people all the time. I can switch over to, that's the property taxes a problem. Then we're going to go to the stormwater fee, which feels like a tax. It's going to raise more money. There's no plan. There's no drawings. There's no engineering. It's just, let's raise money. Which leads me to emsplas. Even your Transit Advisory Board says, hey, the data's terrible. And the project list is terrible. But we're going to prove it because we need to start, get this on the ballot so we can start raising money. Nobody's happy about it. The City of Marietta, who I've read in y'all's paperwork, you said that they signed on to your basic plan for emsplas. Well, Mayor Tumblin and I had that conversation at the last city council meeting. He was unaware that he'd signed on to anything. As a matter of fact, Cheryl Richardson, one of the other council members, brought it up, brought it up in the meeting. She said, have we approved something that I don't know about? So obviously, some information is incorrect. You know, that, so we've got emsplas, we've got stormwater fees, we've got property taxes. You know, and now we're going to raise the water bill up another 10, 10% here after the elections. There's just no end to it. The bloodlust for the taxpayer dollar is phenomenal. So at what point, at a certain point, you have to give, pragmatism must give way to practicality. The people can't afford it. Y'all need to start tightening your belt. When these federal subsidies dry up, which they're in the process of right now because that ARPA money is going fast, you're going to have to replace these programs in the money with more of our tax dollars. Because the only thing more permanent, the most permanent thing in the world is a temporary government program. So let's, let's think about it. Let's tighten our belts. Let's figure out what we need to do to survive because it's fixing to get worse. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Court.
Good evening. I am Donna Court, private citizen, proud constituent of D2 Commissioner Jerika Richardson, Chairwoman Cupid, Commissioners, and Dr. McMorris. My topic for tonight is congratulations. And I just, I came up with four, actually, on, one on the way up here. I saw some of our great colleagues, colleagues from the MDJ. And they had a lovely article about the Smyrna's Fabulous Festival this past weekend. And I was talking to another constituent in the audience how lovely Smyrna is. So good job all around. If you haven't gone, gone before, please go. My second congratulations is actually for the streamlining of the meetings. As a routine visitor here, this is your business meeting. It is really not our meeting. We are guests in your house and is our privilege. And we should behave as guests. And I do think that it is a nice thing to allow more constituents to have input because some of us do have to work during the day. And some of the working people then can get here after work. Again, this is a business meeting. I know we routine, thirdly, we routinely congratulate the first responders, meaning our police and fire. And we're very, very grateful to them. But I also wanted to make sure that we acknowledge Executive Director Melissa Altero, who is one of our subject matter experts and a nationally recognized expert. And her call center, her 911 call center received positive, positive accolades when some of the other counties were falling short. Then my last congratulations is to the Board of Elections. Again, Director Tatefall, another well-run election. And we had live, I did volunteer to work the elections. And we had live updates posted online by 3:00 PM and further and further. And all the, from what I heard, from, as a worker and from the managers, all went very well. So thank you.
Excuse me, Donna. I'm sorry, there seems to be a lot of commentary during your remarks that I didn't hear during other remarks. And I would just ask for those in our audience to please pay the speaker respect as we would like for all of our speakers to be paid similar respect. If you would like to have a conversation, we certainly have space outside the room for that to occur. Sorry about that. May continue.
Thank you. Well, as a guest in your house, this is the Cobb County thing. But it is a business meeting. And I just want to say thank you. That's all I have to say. And congratulations. I appreciate all the elected officials and our public officers, public workers. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Alicia Adams.
Hi, Chairwomen. I'm Alicia Adams. And I am proud that I've lived here ever since I graduated college. The reason why I came here is because when I was a little girl, I was a student at Fair Oaks Elementary. And I fell in love with this place. I want to address a few issues because we have transit here in Cobb. It's not perfect. It's not. But we already have transit. We're at a time in this county where people are maxed out because of inflation. They're struggling to make their rent. They're struggling to make their mortgage. They're struggling to make their groceries. And we're asking them to commit to something that is not solid for our future. You're asking them to commit even more for 30 years in a time of uncertainty that is unprecedented. I want to challenge you in a good way because I believe in being collaborative. We've got a pilot program in Ostel, Powder Springs, Mableton that is going to test the micro-transit. And grant funds are paying for that, if I understood correctly when I went to the meeting. So why are we pushing emsplas now, immediately, when we don't even have the results of it yet? We don't even know what really is going to be feasible going forward. So I'm going to ask you, if we don't know what we're doing and if nothing, we have a project list, but it's not necessarily going to be all executed. What are we doing? Why, why are you asking us to commit to 30 years when we really don't know the future right now? Could we put a table on this for now? Let's streamline what we already have. We have transit. It needs to be better. And if you say, well, we just need to expand on it, no, we don't. I'm tired of seeing empty buses. I see some that are full. But I see some that are horrifically empty virtually all the time. That's not a negative judgment. I'm not trying to be ugly. What I'm trying to say is if we aren't more efficient and effective in our operations, then how can we trust that our money is going to be used judiciously going forward? I'm not willing to just give my money away to an uncertainty. If I want to buy a car, I know exactly what kind of car I'm buying. I don't want to just buy into something that is not, we, we don't have any data really to support whether it's going to be successful or not. We hear that transit's going to increase by twelfold. How is that when we're 73% less than we were before? And that's not just because of COVID. Thank you for hearing me.
The next speaker is Sharon Gibson.
Thank you so much. I, my name is Sharon Gibson. And I appreciate the fact that you were able to read my writing because my hand was shaking so bad. But I've lived in Cobb County for most of my 73 years. And I never really, I've never even been in this building before. So, but I just wanted to say that I'm on social security. And that's my only salary, or whatever you want to call it, income. And I can no longer afford them to increase taxes, which then increases the property, house insurance. And then I just, you know, I'm like, okay, what do I give up? I don't know whether there's anything else I can give up. So that's the one thing that I wanted to say because it's just, you know, I've lived in this house since 96. And I don't look like I'll ever get it paid off because I have to go and refinance it all the time in order to keep paying for everything. So I would appreciate you considering that. Also, as for mass transit, I've, I know when I was younger, I used to always use mass transit, but I don't use it anymore. And it doesn't even, at one time, I was looking for it so my son could use it for his job, but I found that it didn't go anywhere near me. I would have had to drive him all the way to the transit station for him to use it. So that didn't work out. So I just want to say that I have to agree with the last speaker that committing for such a long period of time doesn't seem wise with things changing so rapidly. And also, I read somewhere that they were planning on using 20th century technology for it. I'm like, this is the 21st century, right? Why are we not using 21st century technology? So anyway, that's all I've got to say, and thank you very much.
The next speaker is Leslie Davis.
My name is Leslie Davis. I thought I would touch on all three taxes. A majority of this board says that they're concerned with the lack of affordable housing, but from what I can tell, rent is just through the roof. And a big part of the yearly rent increases that people experience is due to the fact that they don't get homestead exemption. And so every year, when the majority of this board votes to raise the millage rate back up, and they say it's not a tax increase, but we all know it is when you go to pay the tax bill. And the landlords are passing that on to the renters. You know they are. Also, this M-SPLICE, the sales tax, we all know that those on small and fixed incomes are affected most by sales taxes. So why would you endorse adding a new sales tax to the ballot? It's, it's regressive. It hurts the people you say you want to help. And then we'll talk about the stormwater fee, and that I'm concerned about the impact of this fee on Cobb County residents. We've heard from numerous homeowners about the county pushing stormwater infrastructure costs onto homeowners. And ultimately, if the homeowners can't pay for these fixes, the county is going to put a lien on their homes, and they're threatened with losing their homes. And if you're really serious about this problem, you would stop transferring millions of dollars out of the Water Fund every year. So I'll repeat some comments I've made at past meetings, so you've heard this before, but I'll say it again. I work 52 hours a year, weeks a year, because I don't get paid vacation or paid sick leave. I don't have a pension. I don't get retirement plan through work. I haven't had a raise in years because I work for a really small company, and my boss can't just go out and make other people pay more for my salary. So my question is, when will the county government tighten their belts like I do? Thanks.
And the last speaker for this segment is Craig Harfoot.
Hello. My name's Craig Harfoot, and good evening, Commissioners. What I want to say tonight is, I've been, since 2005, I've been coming to these things. And there were, there wasn't a room full of no-tax people. There was maybe five at the beginning. And, and they were talking about the millage rate going up and losing renters. And this one gentleman that was friends with Joe Thompson back then was saying, you know, you've eaten dinner with me, and, and I, and my tenants can't afford me passing on the thing to them, but I can't pay it for them. And, you know, it's an old, old problem, but just think, if our taxes were what they were in 2005, we'd all be happy in here tonight. But the bigger problem is, you're going to have the budget hearing ahead of the millage rate hearing, which is backwards. You need to have the millage rate hearing first. You actually need a study to see the people like the lady in the tie-dye shirt was talking about, because this is where I came in, in the 70s. We're looking like the 70s, only worse, as a country right now. And I was a food stamp worker, and I had to, I was interviewing people, and single women would get $38 out of a $48 allotment back in the 70s, when this program started. And they would, they were maxed out on rents, and everybody in this room would be happy if they could live on their check was like, like $240, and they could pay the rent, pay the utilities, and buy some groceries. This year, everyone's property, or grocery bills doubled. And if you collect 1% for the schools and 1% for Cobb County, you basically have just doubled almost your sales tax incomes for your budget, just because of inflation. You got a tax increase. And so, like I said, you, you're getting ahead of the, the horse ahead of the cart here. And to have, what was those numbers? Was it $500 million more in the budget? You actually need the budget from last year to shrink, and you got to roll back the millage rate so that it's affordable. And like, the first gentleman's, I can't think of his name right now, but he was telling you, you're taxing your voter base right out of the county. Because like on my road on Lower Roswell.
Mr. Harfoot, your time has run. Thank you.
I believe that concludes our first public comment. We are now at our consent agenda. The matters on the consent agenda have scrolled prior to the meeting, and we'll scroll on the screen after the meeting. Commissioners, I believe there has been a revised attachment for item nine that should have been received. This pertains to the FTA grant. And then there were other revisions that were sent prior pertaining to Agenda Items 21 and Agenda Item 35. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Yes. Are there any comments or questions? Thank you.
And then I'd also like the clerk to note my statement for the record, which is found on page 155 of the current agenda. And then also note that the amicus brief that I filed in civil action case number 24-1-2122, a copy can be found in your office. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. We are now at our regular agenda tab, and our first subject matter is transportation.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. The department has three items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $393,833.50 for Riverside Parkway at White Road, Project Number B2309. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners to approve Change Order Number Three Final to the contract with Amshiv Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $1,110,181.66 for Mableton Parkway Pedestrian Improvements, Phase One, Cobb County Project Number X2762. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement to hold a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for engineering design services for eight local maintenance and improvement grant program projects, and further authorize the issuance of task orders to secure required services.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now at our public services portion, and I believe Parks is up.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We have one item for consideration this evening. It's for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Integrity Construction Management to provide construction services for a new maintenance building at the Parks Admin Complex on County Service Parkway under the 2016 Park Splas program. The building will house materials and equipment necessary for daily operations and replace a building that, and spaces that have outlived their useful life. We ask the VOC approved contract with Integrity Construction Management in an amount not to exceed $915,372 for the construction of a new maintenance building at the Parks Admin Complex under the 2016 Park Splas program. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
I'll second. Is there any comment or question regarding this matter? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We are now at our support services tab, and we have two matters under property management.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Property Management has two items this evening.
Okay.
Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Yancey Power Systems for an amount not to exceed $227,465 for the purchase and installation of an emergency generator system for the medical examiner laboratory facility. Authorize procurement of miscellaneous items related to the equipment installation. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the procurement services director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Second item, Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CWC Incorporated in the amount of $219,627.46 for the purchase and installation for furniture and shelving at Gritters Library. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the procurement services director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, thank you. We had a great sneak preview today of Gritters, and it will be opening soon. And I appreciate you getting this on order. Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. That takes us to our second public comment.
Yes, there are two speakers in this segment. The first speaker is Mr. Stephen Bell.
My name is Stephen Bell, and I live in Mableton. When I was a sixth grader, our teacher used to make us sing in class. And one of the songs we sang was, "Give me your tire, your poor," I'm not going to sing it. "Give me your tire, your poor, your huddled masses, yearning to be three. Send them, I lift my lamp beside the golden door." And that particular poem or song was on the Statue of Liberty, and the notion was that America was changing. Prior to the Civil War, Horace Mann was superintendent of schools, and he saw a huge change was happening in our country, and the public schools had the change. And I think the concern that we have in Cobb County is our approach to change. And some people are frightened by change, and some people understand and try to cooperate with change. I think the fact that there, there are people in the audience that are good people and honest people, intelligent people, that look at change as threatening. Cobb County is changing. 1956, the interstate transit system was created, which meant interstates linked Cobb County with other places, and as a result, the constituencies changed. So I see the budget, we just went through some several things where we paid money for new furniture in a library, cost money. And that's change, and change can be something that's good, or change can be something that's threatening. And I try to look at change myself as something that, one, is inevitable, and, two, that we can accommodate to. And I appreciate what you're doing as Commissioners.
And the final speaker of the evening is Mr. James Wesson.
Good evening. James Wesson. Basically, the reason I came tonight was to try to get an answer. I was unable to get an answer through the water system, calling the customer service or lack thereof. The bill, the way they're doing their billing, the change, has created a problem, and it's created a problem for a lot of Cobb County residents in as far as their financial institution, BillPay. The water system has not updated their address within BillPay. They've changed everybody's account number. They've changed where the billing will go to, but you can't change that in BillPay, for whatever reason. I found out that BillPay is an independent company, basically, and everybody has to update their stuff. Water Company hasn't done that. So realistically, what I'm looking for is just an answer. When are they going to get it updated? What if you were out of the country, on the way going somewhere, and y'all decided to inadvertently change where the billing is going? Well, you'd come back, and your water would be shut off because you didn't pay your bill. You had already set everything up prior to your leaving, but y'all changed it and didn't fix it. It's still not fixed. Two months running now, it's still not taken care of. Just trying to get an answer to a question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe our Water Systems Director is here, and she can find you before our meeting concludes this evening. Okay, with that, I believe we are now at our appointment tab, and we do have one appointment before us. Commissioner Richardson.
All right, I'd like to motion.
No, no motion needed.
It's a motion.
Just an announcement.
It's a motion.
Is it a motion? Oh, that was the revision? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Motion to approve the reappointment, as, as revised, but the reappointment of Donna Rowe to the Development Authority of Cobb County.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner. That takes us to our Commissioners' public address, and once those slides are up, Commissioner Gamble, you can begin.
We encourage you to bring your kids to the West Cobb Senior Center to see how police dogs do their jobs. In this special program, canine officers will demonstrate their skills and impress you with their abilities from 1:00 to 2:00 PM on Thursday, June 27. The West Cobb Senior Center is located at 4915 Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. You can click on the QR code to register. CPR is a vital lifesaver, life-saving skill. You can join Cobb County firefighters for the American Heart Association You can join Cobb County firefighters for the American Heart Association's Family and Friends CPR class at the Safety Village this Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The course costs only $10 and includes a book and a keychain face mask. This class covers adult, child, and infant CPR skills but is not a certification class. To register, you can scan the QR code provided and please sign up today. And then on this July 4th, let's honor the brave souls who fought for our freedoms and continue to protect it today. Happy Independence Day.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're going to see if I can get this all in. There we go. First slide. Fourth of July, county offices will be closed next Thursday, July 4th, to observe Independence Day. And did you know, the tradition of fireworks on the Fourth of July dates back to the very first celebration in 1777? John Adams envisioned fireworks as a part of the festivities, believing they would be a fitting way to celebrate the occasion with pomp and parade, with shows, games, sports, guns, bells, bonfires, and illuminations. I hope you also take a moment to reflect on the freedoms we cherish and our responsibilities as citizens. Wishing everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. And from the office, I'm excited to introduce to you some new members in our office. Join me in welcoming Ms. Lauren Daniel, our new project manager, project management intern, and Mr., oh, I said a little bit... Yeah, Mr. Demetrius Lockett, our new housing and zoning cabinet member. And I would also like to give a warm welcome back to Mr. Kevin Redman, who previously was serving as a point for East Cobb, East Cobb liaison. He will now be serving as the cabinet lead. So to learn more about our office, please visit D2Cobb.com. And thank you, Commissioners, for your support in the reappointment. But congratulations to Donna Rowe, who will continue her service on the Development Authority of Cobb County. I look forward to her continued work in shaping the future of our community. And from the community, MSBLOS discussions for seniors. Lots of questions are circulating around what this MSBLOS even means. So the Senior Citizen Council is hosting a senior citizen mobility special purpose local option sales tax discussion, 10:00 a.m. to noon this Friday, June 28th. At Sewell Mill Library. Definitely go find out a little bit more. The Cobb DOT will answer questions regarding the MSBLOS, which will be on the November ballot. Find out more about the MSBLOS project list and how the proposal will affect senior citizens. Please visit seniorsofcobb.org for more information. And join the Braves Green Team. Join Keep Cobb Beautiful at Truist Park on Friday, June 28th at 6:30 p.m. for a unique experience to collect recyclables between innings and cheer on the Braves. 25 volunteer spots are available. Please visit keepcobbbeautiful.org to register. You must be at least 18 years old to register. That concludes my comments, except actually, community huddles. We will not do community huddle during Fourth of July week, but we will resume that following Saturday, July 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell.
The Cobb County Animal Shelter was busy over the weekend. We had some veterans adopt and hopefully more. We had three adoptions from Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program this past weekend and we're up to 257 since the start of the program. Mr. Williams on the right here adopted two cute tabby cats and Mr. Blonde and his family adopted a handsome Labrador Retriever. We're grateful to both veterans for providing a loving home and caring these special pets home and for their service. Mr. Blonde served six years in the Marine Corps and Mr. Williams served four years in the Navy. There's also specials going on if you're not a veteran, because their adoptions are free thanks to sponsorship by Superior Plumbing at the shelter. But there are also other specials going on for cats and dogs. So visit cobbcounty.org/pets and you can check out all the available pets for adoption. Don't take away my minute. So we had our work session on budget. Thank you, Bill Volkman and your team. And as you've heard, there will be three public hearings on the budget and the village in July before the final vote on July 23rd at our night meeting. And everything is also online. Today, we got a sneak preview of the new Gritters. It's going to be awesome. Batson Cook, the contractor, treated us to lunch and a tour. It's open and lots of windows and lots of room for shelving, for books, for offices. And we will have, also have Sonia Grant and her team will have workforce Cobb section as well to help with job placement. And happy Fourth of July to come out to the square and walk with us in the parade and also watch the fireworks. But fireworks are allowed on July 4th till midnight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
District Four news and updates. The Toni Morrison Society and the Friends of the Concord Cover Bridge Historic District dedicated a bench by the road at the Concord Road Silver Comet Trail entrance to honor nearly 4,000 enslaved people of Cobb County, including Matilda Ruff and her family. Pat Burns of the Friends Organization, who discovered Matilda's name through historical documents, highlighted the lack of recognition for Matilda and her children compared to the well-documented Ruff family. This bench is the 34th in the Toni Morrison Society's Bench by the Road project commemorating important aspects of African diaspora history. The dedication took place on the eve of Juneteenth with State Representative Terry Cummings sharing Matilda's story, including her emancipation and subsequent life. The Jungquill Garden Club planted a garden around the bench in her honor. A special thank you to you, Dr. McMorris, for stepping in to deliver words on my behalf head zoning that morning. Join me and Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes for June's In the Zone Community Meeting tomorrow, June 26th at 7:00 p.m. Our monthly meetings are virtual and a great way to learn about recent zoning decisions and upcoming zoning applications in District Four. There are currently four applications to be heard in July. Please email rwanda.mccintosh@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Hope to see you there. The Be Bold Institute is hosting a Community Family Fun Day on Saturday, June 29th from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Wallace Park. The event promises a day filled with free food, fun, a talent show, and a game for all ages, while entry is free. Registration is required to attend. Join us for an afternoon of community bonding and entertainment. Wallace Park is located at 6289 Piska Road in Mabelton. And at the QR code, you can scan the QR code for registration. The Fourth of July, also known as Independence Day, is a significant national holiday in the United States commemorating the adoption of the Declaration of Independence in 1776. It is celebrated with fireworks, parades, concert, and family gatherings reflecting the patriotic spirit of the nation. In observance of the holiday, Cobb County offices will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, allowing employees to join in the festivities and honor this historic day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield, and thank you, all of you, for being here today. I hope that each and every one of you have a happy July 4th. Thanks, our meeting is concluded.
Who said I'm interested?